Hello and welcome to a very special episode of More in Common. I'm Michael Konigs. The world has been through a lot in the last year. Covid-19 spread around the globe, taking lives, closing economies, and canceling public gatherings. And now, as the vaccination campaigns roll out around the world, many are hoping for a restored sense of normalcy. So today, we're talking about how sports, always a great unifier, could help revive the global spirit after such a difficult year. And we're focusing on the Olympics, which has been a vehicle for fostering cooperation and peace among nations for hundreds of years. The Pyeongchang Olympics in South Korea's Gwangwang Province made international headlines when athletes from around the world and North and South Korea joined forces on a unified women's hockey team for the first time. Now, Gwangwang is hoping to lead the way again as the host of the 2024 Youth Olympics. We have an incredible panel of athletes and experts standing by. So let's bring them in. Yu Seung-Ming is the president of the Pyeongchang 2018 Legacy Foundation and vice president of the Gwangwang 2024 Olympic Games Organizing Committee. Zhou Suji is an Olympic hockey player and member of the 2018 Unified Women's Hockey Team that united North and South Korea. Jonathan Yeh is an athlete in the New Horizons Champions Program and a member of the Pyeongchang 2018 Legacy Foundation. Thomas Hong is a Team USA speed skater who competed in the 2018 Pyeongchang Winter Olympics. And Lee Dong-Ming is a young athlete training to compete in the 2024 Gwangwang Youth Olympics as a speed skater. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. I'm going to start with Mr. Yu. After a year where sports and events have been canceled or postponed or heavily modified, what role do you think sports can play in the year ahead to restore that sense of normalcy in places around the world?
Thank you, Michael. Well, I believe that sports has various values to overcome this difficulty. Since Covid-19 spread around the world, we have been challenging so many things. For example, social distancing or travel restrictions and quarantines, many, many other challenges. But sports can be like tools to overcome, then encouraging people to how to live post-corona era or how to prepare in these difficult situations. So since last year, the IOC and the Olympic movement has various programs, such as like Stay Strong Campaign or Active Campaign, or many webinar series to provide athletes for prepare and gather informations in these difficult circumstances. So sports has a value to overcome these difficult circumstances.
And would also like to hear, in terms of Jonathan, you're excited about the Youth Olympics coming up and all that that might stand for. Can you talk about just the anticipation of these kind of events?
Yeah, the anticipation of events, Olympics are not like big events, is always amazing to look forward to. And it's like Suji said before, you know, these things represent more than sport. They represent unity. They represent people coming together despite different backgrounds, different circumstances. But yeah, just, you know, the unity and diversity is what attracts people. And, you know, as many problems as we have going on in the world, sport is the one thing that always brings people together. It's the one thing that people can agree on and can work towards. So, you know, an event like the Gwangwang 2024, yeah, that's just another opportunity for people to come together, for people to share the Olympic spirit and more than competition, but, you know, to show that love, to show that generosity that people have for each other, which might not come out usually, yeah.
So I wanted to get a little more thought on the North and South Korea Games, where you're on the border in Gwangwang, a province that really goes into both countries. And talk about the significance of competing against that backdrop, that incredibly meaningful dividing line.
Yes, as you mentioned, we do have the dividing line on the Korean peninsula. But at that time, as we were competing as the unified team, we didn't have the dividing line within our team. We were one team. We were united. And we did not recognize ourselves as either from South Korea or North Korea. We were just playing as a one team. We came from different backgrounds. We had different experiences in these two Koreas. But at that time during the Olympics, we did not really, we did not think about that because we didn't consider or divide ourselves. But we were just athletes, members of the same team, and we had the same goal. So in short, I would say that we were all doing our best as athletes. So even though we were physically close to the dividing line, we didn't have the dividing line within our team. But as you said, the venue was Pyeongchang, which was close to North Korea. And it was a very meaningful venue and opportunity for all of us in Korea.
Glad to hear it. And then, Mr. Yu, what are the plans for those 2024 Youth Olympic Games?
Yeah, thank you, Michael. This Gwangwang 2024 Established Organizing Committee, supported by government and then Gwangwang Province, which is a host city, then also people of Korea, then as well as IOC Established Coordination Commission, led by Zhang Hong, who are Olympic champion and former skater from China. So we are currently preparing a first stage. Then also, we are looking forward to a successful host game in 2024 Gwangwang.
Exciting times ahead, very exciting stuff. And talk about the mission of those Youth Olympics and why is it so important for young athletes to compete against others from around the world?
As you may know, this Youth Winter Games, Youth Olympic Game is very important role to young athlete and young participants. Especially in Gwangwang Province, its legacy part is very important. We can use existing venues and existing volunteers. And maybe we can provide various programs through like Horizon Champions Program, like Zona Dan, to participate our program, to want to become the Olympians. But this is a little bit smaller size than Olympic Games, but we have a very much diverse programs, such as like education programs and diverse activity in the village. This is a mission for the Youth Olympic Games, not only competing, the friendships and exchange their experience and cultural experience. There's many, many diverse programs to achieve it through Youth Olympic Game. So I'm really sure that some participants will be a benefit to diverse learning programs, diverse exchange programs, diverse communication programs in the Winter Youth Olympic Games.
Well, we're rooting you on. We're rooting you on from New York as you continue that training and what a unique sport that is. Mr. Yu, I also wanted to kind of ask, we're continuing the tradition with the Youth Olympics being hosted in Gwangwang. And you're calling the Youth Olympics the Gwangwang Games. It's no longer associated just purely with the city and instead is a part and named after a region. Why is that significant?
I think this significant is two parts, as a legacy part and then value of this winter sports. Because in Korea, before the Pyeongchang Winter Games, people not really aware of the winter sports. But through the Olympic Games in Pyeongchang 2018, people really amazing aware of the winter sports and they became the big fan of the winter sports. That this is some kind of legacy part on software and hardware, like existing venue and volunteers who are really loves winter sports. And secondly, through this corona pandemic circumstances, but we are challenging all over the world. But through the sports and through the Winter Youth Olympic Games is one of the like a value or make the contribution to the world, to united and solidarity through sports. Especially young people and young generations are learning through the Olympic Games. What is the performance of the Youth Olympic Games? This is our value and our mission. And this is a very significant role in the 2024 Gwangwang Winter Youth Olympic Games.
And it's such a gorgeous region. I remember strapping on my skis and hauling down that mountain there and just seeing that Olympic Village and was blown away. I'm glad the youth from around the world will get to see it in just a few years. And can you also talk, Mr. Yu, about the plans for another unified team between North and South Korea in the 2024 Youth Olympics? Is that something that might happen?
Possibility is always open. But we are always open the door to North Korea. Also, we need to support by world society to encouraging them to participate the Winter Youth Olympic Games. And then also, it is possible to make the one team like before in Pyeongchang 2018. It will be another amazing history in the Olympic Games and world communities.
That's really extraordinary and hoping that something like that might happen. We'll see. And Jonathan, why is it important to expose young people in countries with warm climates like Malaysia to winter sports there in all over the world?
Yeah, so I think it's important, like you said, not just Malaysia, but other countries as well, right? Countries that might not suit the climate that they need to do the sport. Besides the fact that you promote winter sport, obviously, there's also, you know, just teaching the next generation that the idea that no matter what your background is, no matter what your circumstances, you can go and chase after your dream. You can go and do something that people in your country or your culture don't normally do. So, you know, just inspiring them that, hey, like, it doesn't matter where you come from, like, as long as you have a dream, like, go try, like, go ahead and go for it. So, you know, I think that's more than winter sport, but like sport in general and just everything else in life, right? If you have a dream, go and try. And even if you try your best and say you don't make it or it's not your thing, at least, you know, you give it a shot and you give it your best shot. And I think like that's doing better than the rest of the world that, you know, they dream and they don't try. So it's important, yeah, to expose people to winter sport for a big idea, in my opinion, yeah.
And then can you talk a little bit more about the New Horizons Development Program you're part of and that mission?
Yeah, so the New Horizons Program. To summarize, it's a crazy program. The fact that, you know, South Korea is willing to help other countries around the world to develop athletes, to share their resources, to share their knowledge and expertise, like, it makes no sense at all that they would do this. But that is what makes, like, that's what makes it so perfect. Like, it's a perfect representation of the Olympic spirit. So, you know, I've never been involved or heard of a program so unselfish, so generous, so, you know, considerate in my life, which is what makes it so amazing. So, you know, South Korea and the New Horizons Sliding Program has brought together countries from, you know, all around the world, mainly Southeast Asia. But we've also had some involvement with like countries like Israel and Australia as well. So, yeah, like what the Korean government is doing in supporting us and also the Pyeongchang Legacy Foundation for starting up this whole thing, like, it's absolutely amazing. Like, like I said, I've never heard of a program, you know, this generous. And hopefully, you know, this legacy continues on and it will continue to make an impact years after 2018. And people will come back and they will remember this place as home, even though they come from other countries, even though their backgrounds is different. But they'll always come back and say, like, I was there. I was in this program and Korea is my second home. All these coaches, all these athletes are now my family.
That's incredible. And I grew up in Colorado, a winter paradise. And the idea of bringing sports, winter sports, to people in every part of the globe is just, I think, so affirming. And I'm sure they will be very grateful to Korea for their efforts there and your program. So just an awesome program there.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, it's absolutely amazing. And we'll always cherish this moment for the rest of our lives. So, you know, again, thank you very much for the South Korean government for supporting us and the Pyeongchang Legacy Team. Yeah, sorry, I forgot to mention. So this program is for bobsleigh and skeleton, which is sliding sports. And, yeah, like I said, a lot of these Southeast Asian athletes, they come to Korea and they haven't seen snow in their lives. So, yeah, either way, they're going to remember this to the rest of their lives.
Without a doubt. And just the thrill of racing down those hills at top speed. What a program.
Yeah, of course. Like, if you ever come back, Michael, like you, we need to put you in a sled and throw you down there.
I love that. I really am excited by that idea. The thrill of hauling down a mountain in your program. I'm looking forward to that day. And then Dong-Ming, can you talk a little bit more, you know, coming at this, you know, as the youngest guy in the room there, what are you most proud of in terms of your own athletic achievements and what you hope to achieve?
In the future, I hope to compete in the Olympics. And I hope to also build friendship with athletes around the world. And I think I would be very proud to have participated.
Mr. Yu, what do you hope people watching the Youth Olympics will take away?
As I mentioned, that Youth Olympic has a value and some give them the opportunity to engage each others and share their experience. Then I wish to all the people to show the Olympic Games in Gwangwang 2024 as a like, I think we can, we can, we can show them like inspirational message, like young participants competing each others, shaking and like a friendship and hug together after their competition and then smiling, they're like, enjoy the festival, like a festival to as a young, young, young participant. This is, it gives them very much a strong influence and a strong inspirational message to world to bring together and united together. Because this, we are, we are having a really struggle circumstances since last year. But maybe Youth Olympic Games will give them this opportunity to have enjoyed the games and watch their performances, watch their, you know, friendships and so on.
Well, it's like an appetizer where they get a taste of it and it drives them, I assume, to kind of continue to compete, to just fall in love with that Olympic spirit. And so excited to see these new athletes emerging. Great. Thomas, we're so glad you can join us here.
Hello. Hi, guys.
Great to connect, great to see you there. And, yeah, we now have a truly global forum.
This is amazing, yeah. Glad to be a part of this.
Thrilled to have you here. And so, Thomas, can you talk about what these Olympians, you know, feel as they train so hard for the competitions? And then what so many faced this past year of having that Olympic competition delayed? What do you think's going through their heads right now? And what are folks feeling?
Right. Yeah, I can only imagine what the Olympic athletes are feeling. On a smaller scale, I've dealt with this a little bit. Where I was supposed to be selected for an international race at a selection competition, you know, I just didn't perform my best. And so ultimately, I just fell short of getting qualified to compete at International World Cups. And my first instinct was disappointment and doubt and things like that, right? To set you into a dark place if you're preparing for something and the goal is moved. And I'm thinking that's likely what these athletes are feeling, a lot of anxiety, a lot of anxiousness just to get out there and compete and not knowing how their body would be in a year's time, right? These athletes are competing and training 100% all the time. And to have that goalpost moved the next year, you don't know how you're going to feel the next year. You don't know what your competitors are going to feel the next year. So I imagine that the athletes are having the Olympics postponed was a big blow to them. But that being said, the Olympics are, you know, it's a unifying event. And so as a spectator and someone that loves the Olympics, and I'm sure a lot of people feel the same way, but we're excited to have them back this year.
And then in addition to participating in the 2018 Winter Olympics, you also competed in the 2012 Olympics. What did you, I'm sorry, the 2012 Youth Olympics? And what did that experience mean to you? And do you have any advice for like Dong-Ming, who's about to compete as a speed skater as well in those Youth Olympics?
Yeah, the 2012 Youth Olympics in Innsbruck, Austria was actually my first major international competition. And from then until the 2018 Olympics, you know, that's six years of time. The international competitions in between were just not the same caliber. So I definitely got a great taste of what the Olympics could be. It was a very exciting time as a young, I think I was 14 years old, as a young kid, to go to a foreign country and to meet certain, all these different people from all backgrounds and competing in different sports. I was just taken away at how cool the experience was. And I think that actually helped me and lit a fire in me to want to compete in the Olympics later on.
I believe it, you got that taste of it there.
Yeah, and also for, as far as advice goes to anyone that's going to compete in the Youth Olympics, it's just to cherish the moment. Sometimes as an athlete, we get really wrapped up in the sport that we're competing in, which is the most important thing, of course, our performance. But at the same time, just really take a step back and soak in the moment and realize that you're being surrounded by some pretty amazing people.
Some of the most extraordinary people in the world.
Yep.
And Dong-Ming, do you have any questions for Thomas, given that you guys play a similar sport and you're in some ways following in his footsteps?
So when you compete with athletes from around the world in your experience, how did it feel to first compete with athletes from around the world?
Okay. I think initially, I was definitely nervous because the scale of competitions between domestic and international competitions with international competitors, it's definitely different. But that being said, once you do go out and the start gun is blown off, the race itself is the same exact thing. It just happens to be that your competitors are now from a different country or a different nationality. And so I think that's also one of the cool things about sports. Once you, once you start competing, you just kind of quickly tune that out and you focus on your own, your own race, your own match, whatever it be.
Good advice, good advice, and one we should all follow. And Suji, I know you have some memorabilia from your experience there, maybe a photo. Can you, A, show us, you know, some of those memories and talk about, again, just some of those moments that you remember most fondly from that event?
Well, as I participated in the unified team, I brought my uniform with me. Let me show you the uniform first. This is my uniform from the unified team. So here you can see that I have autographs from everyone. But on the bottom, the autographs that look a bit fancier, they're from the South Korean team. So you can see that they really look like what we would think of autographs. But the autographs by the North Korean athletes, you can see that they just printed their name. They have a simple printing of their name instead of some fancy signature. So you can see that there's difference.
Literally the difference right there on the jersey, with your names on the bottom and theirs on the top.
And here I have with me something that was distributed by the Ministry of Unification. The North Korean athletes also received this copy. So here you can see that we have all the moments from when we first met, when we trained together, and pictures of us actually in the game. And when we said goodbye. So we have this book with all of the pictures from our time together. And I, it's really precious to me because here you can see that the North Korean athletes, before they left, they wrote me little messages on my copy.
That puts my high school yearbook to shame. I mean, to just see the way those memories have been captured and just the camaraderie, both with the writing there as well as the snapshots, really. What a moment and what a moment for camaraderie that the world was watching. Thank you, thank you again. This next question for Thomas. How do you think sports might be able to help bring back the world and a sense of normalcy following Covid as these events come back online, as fans come back into the stadiums? What do you think sports can do to bring us together?
Yeah, I think a word that's been used already is unification, right? Sports has the unique, unique joy and the unique ability to bring people together. And I know for myself, last year, and continuing on, we're not quite vaccinated yet. But I've missed out on a lot of events that I would find normal, like going out to dinner, going out to the movies, things like that. And to fill in the gaps, I've actually enjoyed watching sports with a small gathering of people. And it's things like that that I think shifts the focus from it just being a competitive thing to being entertainment, to things that people can really enjoy. And it just brings people together. And I think with more sports figuring out ways to safely compete, it's going to bring some healing to the world.
I like that. And certainly the sentiment of our show, More in Common, just the sense of the bonds that can be formed both from friends and competitors in these sports. It's so true.
Right.
Great. And I think I would just like to wrap with one, you know, and we've hit most of these questions. But I think, you know, for a final question that each of you can either jump in on or and we'll kind of, but just talk about moving forward. Is there a sense that, and you guys have addressed this in some ways, but I guess, how do you think the spirit of the Olympics can be taken into people's hearts in their homes now? That everyone looks to Olympians as heroes, as examples of how we can live kind of better lives? And what do you think people should be thinking about as they are stuck at home about kind of the future of the Olympics and what it can mean as it comes back online?
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, this is a great question. Actually, the goal of the Olympic movement is to contribute to building a peaceful and better world. Actually, the goal of the Olympic movement is to contribute to building a peaceful and better world. I believe those words, like, I could say, sports has the unique power to change the world. Sports has the unique power to overcome any difficulties. And sports can be bring people together, especially in the Olympic Games, without any discriminations. It meant, you know, in these difficulties, difficult times in sports, the way to overcome and encouraging to people lives. So we are really looking forward to the upcoming Tokyo Olympics and then Beijing Winter Olympics and as well as Gangwon 2024 Winter Youth Olympics will be bring inspiration to the people.
Those were great words and that inspiration is certainly there.
I would like to add on to that, just like Jonathan has mentioned and just like Mr. Yu has mentioned. I believe that sports is something with a very unique power. Because sports does not call for diplomatic rhetoric or political rhetoric, but still we can make changes. I experienced that myself. When people from different regimes speak to each other, we sometimes find ourselves in conflict or in disagreement. But exchanges through sports expands our understanding and it also fills in the gap between people who are far apart. And so I believe that exchanges through sports, although are not easy, it is a very important approach to coming together. Before participating in the Unified Hockey Team, when I watched TV and I watched separated families from North Korea and South Korea meeting each other, I thought it was heartbreaking, but I never thought that it was a part of my life. But when I participated in the Unified Team and after the game was over and the North Korean athletes boarded the bus to go back to North Korea, I couldn't say goodbye, I couldn't say see you again. When we compete against students from other countries, we can still talk to each other through DMs and social networking. But we knew we couldn't talk to these North Korean athletes again. And so I felt like I was becoming a separated family. I could really understand the separated families that I had seen on TV. I believe that I had played my part in facilitating communication with North Korea. And I hope that it will open new ways of communication exchanges in the future.
That drama of having to go your separate ways right after those games, I can't imagine. And it's helpful to hear. Well, and hearing all of you speak, I think there is just an incredible sense that you're not only leading by actions by being, you know, top athletes, but with your words. You speak so well and deeply appreciate your sentiments. And then Dongming.
I believe that sports will offer opportunities for people to be united once again. And as you mentioned, I hope to be able to participate in these international events. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great. And then Dongming, I'm sorry, I gotta get one more question for you here. Producer in my ear saying, let's just recap. What are you most excited about for the 2024 Winter Youth Olympics?
I would really want to win a medal. But at the same time, I really look forward to meeting athletes from all around the world in Korea and compete with sportsmanship, and that's what I expect the most. And I'm sure a lot of people know K-pop and K-culture, but I also hope that to share Gangwon Province's beauty and culture with them.
Well, thank you all so much for being with us today, sharing with us these ideas, these experiences, these moments from your time as both Olympians and people who are champions of sport. And I remember just a year ago being there in Gwangju, in the Pyeongchang, you know, venues and just being in awe of the history that was made there and excited that that will continue to be the center of so much energy and positive change and advocacy for peace. So thank you for joining us today and hope you have a wonderful weekend.